twentieth meeting of the West Sacramento Planning Commission. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Tilly, would you please lead us tonight?
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and endlessness.
Tonight's agenda is available on the counter along with the white Request to Speak cards. The Request to Speak cards should be completed and turned into the clerk on my right prior to the completion of any staff presentation in order to be recognized. And for those speakers who would like to speak on items not in the agenda but within the jurisdiction of this commission, please write Item A on your card. Or if you wish to speak on a specific item on the agenda, please write the item number, which is just one today. And all speakers will be limited to three minutes and you can track your time by monitoring the clock right next to the clerk. Speaking in public may cause some individuals to feel uncomfortable so everyone is asked to be professional and respectful to all speakers. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and televised so all speakers in order to be recognized must be called on by the chair. Come forward to the microphone and please state your name for the record. We will have one public comment period for the item on Public Workshop number two in the agenda and then we will close that public comment period and not have further public comment after that. We will bring it back to the commissioners for discussion. Tonight I have one Public Workshop presentation for tonight's agenda. At this time we will take up presentations by the public on matters not in the agenda. I don't have any Request to Speak cards. So we will move next to Correspondence and Staff Communications in the Planning Commission. Secretary, Mr. Tilly.
Yes, I know items of correspondence but I would like to let the Planning Commission know and anyone who may be watching the meeting that this Monday the entire City Hall parking lot will be closed for some paving and striping work and that the parking lots, our satellite parking lots behind Walgreens and also at the church next door would be available for any customers that may be coming in. It's expected to be a one day only closure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tilly. And is there any disclosure of expertise communications to my right? No, to my left? No? Okay. And I have been speaking with members of the community regarding our general plan policy document today, the residents that have an interest in the refinement of our general plan. Next is the Consent Agenda. We will take consideration and approval of the minutes from the October 6 meeting.
Chair Guerrero, I move to approve the minutes from our last meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Austin moves.
Second.
Commissioner Austin second. All in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Madam Chair, I need to abstain.
Commissioner Leibig abstained. Any noes? Okay. One abstention. Item is moved. Now we will have a regular agenda item, the Public Workshop number two and the General Plan 2035 Draft Policy Document. Mr. Tilly?
Yes, thank you, Chair Guerrero. Tonight's item as it states in staff report is our second workshop on the policy document overall. We were before you last month on this and received several solid comments from you that we've attempted to address in tonight's staff report and including in the policy document itself with the highlighted sections. Our goal tonight would be to try to focus in on those recommended changes. We also did the same presentation last night at the City Council. We received two comments from the council regarding the changes that we have made. The first one was regarding neighborhood electric vehicles and the second one was regarding the overall transportation system and how it can become, you know, working toward a more seamless integration of different modes, specific comments from the mayor. So we will be working on those two particular proposals but otherwise those were the only two comments that we received last night from the council.
Mr. Tilly, could you describe in a little more detail about the neighborhood electric vehicles? What about it?
Oh, yes. Councilman Johansson asked about the concept of using neighborhood vehicles on some of our trails and other bikeways. And so we, our current policy in here certainly doesn't preclude any of that. But what we, you know, looking at this since we, well, the meeting last night determined that that may be possible but it does require approval of a specific NVE plan at the state level. And so we anticipate editing that policy to reference the need for that state approval should that be something we wish to do in the future.
Thank you.
So for tonight, I want to provide a summary of the changes that we have made based on the prior Planning Commission and prior City Council workshops on the policy document. I think, you know, first and foremost, we've moved, updated and moved the Vision section to the front of the plan so it really talks about where we're going instead of where we have been as a leadoff. And this incorporates many of the concepts from the charter discussions that the council had previously worked that Ms. Hamilton had put together in editing that section. We also made some relatively minor revisions to several of the policies based on the input we got from both the Planning Commission and the council. So we sort of combined those and they're all sort of itemized in your staff report from each body but they generally circle around autonomous vehicles, ride share and bike share, broadband, the EIFD concept, and additional coordination in various areas, you know, with the county. Then we also removed and sort of updated some of the implementation programs that were in the current term of Art, General Plan Dust, some of those programs that were either unnecessary or had already been completed and were sort of just holdovers from sort of how long we have been at this. The only real significant new policy was one the council asked us to conclude which is a reference to 21st century policing, which has been an ongoing matter and there was a presentation on that effort from the police at the council last night. Also at this time we are recommending two small changes in the land use map. This would be a parcel at Stonegate and Lake Washington where the current general plan designation is medium density residential and at this stage we're actually, you know, seeking to leave that as medium density residential. And then there's a couple of small parcels at the very west end of West Capital and near the Enterprise exit that we would look to be commercial instead of commercial highway and provide a little more flexibility there which also includes a city owned parcel. So our next steps really are tonight's, you know, tonight's workshop which is, you know, sort of following off of last night's workshop with the City Council. And then we plan to be back before you in an advertised public hearing on the first which would be a special meeting starting at 6:30. And then that's when actually we would be seeking a formal action by the Planning Commission and then that would be followed up by a hearing before the City Council on November 16th. So with that I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Tilly. At this time we can either go over the changes or just provide any general comments before I open it up to public comment, bring it back to the commissioners and then look at it in more detail. Okay, we'll open it up to the public comment. I have one request to speak, Mr. Paul Warwick. Would you please come up to the mic and you have three minutes?
Good evening, Commission members. My name is Paul Warwick and I live in Southport. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of many Southport residents who share my concerns about necessary transportation infrastructure improvements in West Sacramento, particularly in light of the approximately 6,800 homes approved for the Liberty River Park and Yarborough developments. A decade from now these developments along with smaller ongoing developments and the Bridge District will potentially add well over 10,000 cars to current traffic patterns. I believe that is a conservative estimate. Coming and going throughout each day, traffic in West Sacramento will be dramatically heavier than it is now. But the worst traffic will be during the morning commute when northbound traffic on Jefferson Boulevard and Village Parkway converge at two eastbound onramps that are only a couple of hundred yards apart. At that point commuters will experience severe gridlock and that's without factoring in whatever portion of Bridge District residents opt to use one of those ramps. We're all glad that the I Street Replacement Bridge is moving forward. It's long overdue. It's also a positive sign that a bridge at Enterprise Boulevard is being discussed and the Broadway Bridge will be in the nice to have category. The more bridges, the better. But possibly Southport's greatest need, or for that matter any West Sacramento resident trying to access the eastbound 5080 interchange, is for a bridge at Sutterville Road adjoining Lake Washington Boulevard at I-5. The reason this bridge has been talked about off and on for decades is because the location is so obvious. A bridge at Sutterville Road would ease northbound traffic by providing more direct access to I-5 and particularly I-5 South and to jobs and businesses east and south of West Sacramento. And we don't want to forget City College, the zoo, William Land Park, and not to mention friends located in those areas as well as family. And while more direct access to these places would have been a wonderful convenience over these many years, when you take into account the new developments in Southport, the Sutterville Road Bridge has now become essential as a critical outlet for burgeoning traffic. It's also important to note that a bridge at that location could someday provide, prove vital as an evacuation route in a disaster. Therefore, we implore you to add the Sutterville Road Bridge to the general plan. We also ask that you put the brakes on River Park, Yarborough, and other development until planning and funding for transportation infrastructure improvements has time to catch up. At the very least, let's study traffic patterns after Liberty's 1,500 homes are completed before breaking ground on any other developments. So I'm hoping that Mayor Cobalden can develop a good relationship with Mayor Steinberg and maybe they can work something out to make this happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. We have another request to speak. It's Paul Mason. Please come up. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul Mason. I live also in Southport. And I came tonight expecting to have a workshop where we might be presented with the proposed changes between the current general plan and what's being proposed for the changes. And so I'm feeling disadvantaged in terms of making comments on the document because there's really no, I mean, if I had not gone and downloaded the document and read it there, I mean, what is the process for any public engagement on this?
I believe the document was posted on the website, on the first page of the city's website.
There's a link on the homepage that says, you know, here's a document.
And then from there they were requesting public comment and feedback. Mr. Tilly, is that correct? Is that how you saw it happening?
Yeah, we're really toward the, you know, as the mayor indicated last night, we are really moving toward the end of essentially a 10-year off and on effort to complete the update to the city's general plan. And so tonight's workshop is part of that effort but this has been an ongoing effort for many years now.
And we will have a public hearing November 1st at 6:30. Will you have a second chance to review? You know, that document is available in the library from what I heard in Mr. Kristof but also online which is more accessible for people to take a look at. We have the document highlighted in yellow where the changes are and then Mr. Tilly provided the presentation as to what the changes were in his presentation tonight and maybe you can get a copy of that presentation so you can, but it's not like specified page numbers. We just, it's highlighted in yellow.
Okay. I guess my, you know, I pay more attention to city government than most and in terms of an actual workshop that saw any sort of engagement from the public, it would be hard to have it be less substantive in this discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Mason, I actually really appreciate your comments and I think that they're valid. One thing that I do want Mr. Tilly to address a little bit is we, as you may be familiar, if you're familiar with the general plan, there's many components and one of the ways that this was handled was that various commissions looked at some or, I don't know if we actually might have looked at, looked at all of them on the Planning Commission but I believe all the commissions have looked at some or parts of the, basically the different chapters, the housing element, the mobility element, et cetera. So there have been opportunities to comment then. There's also been opportunities to comment in other workshop formats and I think they're probably discussing when those were. So that doesn't address your concerns. However, I have personally found as a resident before I was a commissioner to find that city staff have been incredibly accommodating so I would assume that between now and then, if, I don't want to speak for you but I would imagine that staff may be willing to go over that at some point with you, maybe not every resident but, so let me turn it over to staff and let them answer that question.
So there was a tremendous amount of public outreach, charrettes and everything over several years. This general plan update started in 2006. We had outreaches to the schools, to senior centers.
Advocacy groups?
Yes, everything.
Business groups, yeah.
Even after pausing the general plan for a little bit in 2010 and 12 due to economic reasons and also for flood protection reasons, we did reengage the public when we started it back up in 2013 and held a couple more workshops around and said this is where we left off, is there anything that has changed in the last few years? And so since that time we have moved into the environmental review, we have prepared the EIR, we have concluded the public comment on the EIR, we have prepared the final EIR. We are today at the very end and what the workshop is today is to check back in with the commission and made sure that we addressed your comments from the last time we met with you. So I'm sorry if it was misleading in any way but we really are at 11:55 in this process. So we can, our website with the general plan has a lot of history on it. Staff is more than happy to share with the public where that is, walk them through some of the history on that. But we really are at the end of this process.
Okay, that's good to know. So, yeah, at this time we are at the end. This workshop is for the commissioners to review all the comments that we have received and provided and to make those final changes. And then at the public hearing, we will approve, on November 1st at 6:30, approve it for it to go to the City Council on November 16th for final approval.
And I would suggest going forward that when you advertise something as a workshop that part of that agenda includes a reasonable description of the project and not an assumption that everybody who is coming to the workshop is fully steeped in the document. If you want to just have a discussion that assumes that everybody already comes to the table with a full and working knowledge of the entire process over the last 10 years, don't call it a workshop. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't have any other requests to speak. We will close the public comment and bring it back to the commissioners for further discussion.
Chair Guerrero, we have a representative from our Transportation Group here. I'd like to address the Sutterville Bridge notion if that would be your pleasure.
Sure, I think we have one member of the audience but I don't have a request to speak so that has to be submitted in order for you to be recognized. And at this time we can have the staff person come up and in between this period provide some comments on Mr. Warwick's recommendation.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Members of the commission, my name is Jason McCory. I'm a Senior Transportation Planner with West Sacramento Public Works. I'm also the Project Manager for the I Street Bridge Replacement Project as well as the Broadway Bridge Project. So two bridges, hopefully I can provide a little bit of insight into how we got to where we are today. I should specify that for the I Street Bridge Replacement Project, even though I am a Project Manager for the City of West Sacramento, that is a City of Sacramento project. Broadway Bridge is a City of West Sacramento project. Both of those projects are right now in the PAED phase which is Project Approvals and Environmental Documentation phase. So to kind of back up a little bit, some of you may recall and some residents may recall there was an extensive public engagement process with regard to the Sacramento River Crossings Alternative Study that was conducted between 2010 and 2011 between both the City of Sacramento and the City of West Sacramento. There was an advisory committee for that that consisted of professionals that were from the City of West Sacramento as well as Sacramento engaged in both the cities as, you know, professional engineers as well as members of the public and selected members from the Land Park Neighborhood Association, Southport, et cetera. So that study looked at eight different river crossings that extended all the way from Richards Boulevard down to Sutterville Road. There was an analysis done, as I said, extensively looking at all the different market areas and all the different alternative crossings of the Sacramento River. What wound up happening was after the analysis, there was a recommendation to move forward with a North Market Area Bridge Crossing and a South Market Area Bridge Crossing. In the South Market specifically, south of Pioneer Bridge which is US 50, all the way to Sutterville Road and the Sutterville Road Crossing. What happened during this analysis was they determined that based on political input from both cities, neighborhood input from different residents and different neighborhood associations, that there was significant concern about potential traffic impacts, truck crossing impacts, as well as from Caltrans regarding the Sutterville Road Bridge which I believe was built in 1974. I could be wrong on that date but there was some significant concern about adding additional trips onto that bridge. So the, by the time the entire process was done, I believe it was July 18th or 19th and went to the Sacramento City Council, City of Sacramento decided that they needed additional input specifically on a neighborhood friendly bridge definition. That's the guiding policy that was adopted by the City of Sacramento and accepted by the City of West Sacramento. And it basically looked at, I think, eight different criteria for how a bridge would be developed between the two cities. And that included make sure that it was not attached to regional facilities, that it was a neighborhood oriented bridge, would not land in a residential neighborhood for instance, primarily remaining within commercial corridors. So all of these different considerations were brought to the table. The Sutterville Road did not meet those qualifications of a neighborhood friendly bridge and the City of Sacramento, I believe it was in October of 2011, solidified their intent not to support a Sutterville Road Crossing. At the same time, our City Council, actually I think earlier than that in July, the West Sacramento City Council decided that was also not the direction that we wanted to go. So the two cities decided at that time that Sutterville Road Crossing would be taken off the table and we would focus our attention more toward the Broadway Corridor in the South Market and the I Street Bridge Corridor in the North Market. So that's kind of where we're at today. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
You know, a couple years ago, back when you weren't born. But, you know, no, I don't remember how long ago it was but I'll bet it was 10, 15 years ago, they talked about running a bypass off of I-5 down in South Sacramento that would connect to 113 down in Davis. Is that still around? Is that talk still going?
I'm not aware of that.
That's because I'm old and I remember those things. But there was a, there was a process or there was a group that said we're going to eliminate the traffic downtown and so they were going to take the traffic that was going towards the bay and just kind of bypass and we would have a way to connect into that. And I don't know if it's still on the table, it must not be if you haven't heard about it but...
No, I can tell you as far as traffic patterns what's happening now with West Sacramento. There is an absolute need for more river crossings. That has been a decided policy for both cities and we have received funding from the now defunct Highway Bridge Replacement Program from the previous legislative, federal legislation that authorized that. Now the FAST Act has kind of moved that money into a different direction but we do have funds for the construction of that bridge. As I said, right now we're in the Project Approval Environmental Documentation Phase. For Broadway Bridge, we have $3 million, 1.5 million that was obtained from federal tiger grant as well as matching funds from the two cities that is going to get us through the environmental documentation phase but we do not have funds available now for final design or construction. So we are 2036 right now before we're even looking at having a bridge online and that's if we were to find funding for that bridge. If you go further south, there's the Consumers River Bridge that's, you know, been constructed down toward Elk Grove. A lot of the traffic that's heading north from I-5 is actually cutting down to the Freeport Bridge, crossing over and then coming up through Southport to try to find a way to get across and then cut back over into downtown Sacramento. Our own police department and, you know, we have regular meetings between Traffic and Transportation Division and our police department to make sure that we're addressing all concerns of residents and continuing efforts for enforcement. And we found that there's been a lot of additional traffic that's cutting up through that area. So any bridge that comes in on the southern portion of the city will act primarily as a bypass for the congested I-5 freeway. So the analysis that was done with the river crossing study also demonstrated that effect as well as the potential for truck traffic to cut through down Lake Washington Boulevard into the industrial areas of the city and beyond. So a lot of that was wanting to be avoided and then picking an alternative that would still serve Southport but was closer to the downtown corridor, it was the general consensus at that time that that was the best way to accommodate that without having significant impacts to either the Land Park Association or to our Southport residents. And as I said, we are seeing that today with the new bridge in the southern portion, more and more people cutting up and through our own community. So that is a difficulty and that's partly why we're hoping not to have a southern bridge alignment causing more impacts to our neighborhoods.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just wanted to make a comment. So thank you for that. Actually, I was going to address the resident, Mr. Warwick, is that right? So yes, I, you are not the first person to mention that there's, that there appears to be a lot, you don't actually need to come up, I'm just letting you know.
Is it the EIFD comment?
Sure, yeah. I, so yes, I think that your concerns are absolutely valid and I think that logically when you look at the grids of the City of Sacramento and the City of West Sacramento, it seems incredibly natural. And you also had a very articulated point, a well-articulated point that you were making. But in addition to what city staff was addressing, one of the things that we need to be incredibly cognizant of is again that we're, it's a completely different jurisdiction, it's a different city and it's a different county and it's, it's a tricky matter. And I think that, you know, you are right in considering that, you know, it's, that it'll come down to political leadership on where those things need to be addressed. That also needs to be weighed with the very, and I remember this process, it was an incredibly extensive process of community outreach that happened on both sides of the river, particularly on the Sacramento side of the river which is much more heavily residential. So thank you for, you know, you're doing your civic duty in coming up and addressing this and I also appreciate, and I hope that if you have additional questions that city staff will be available, maybe could, you know, provide, you know, contact information for you to follow up with additional questions or concerns on this.
Am I allowed to make another comment?
At this point you're up there now so we can go ahead and provide a comment.
Just don't go over like three minutes or whatever.
So I think all the technical explanations supporting the objections to the Sutterville Road Bridge are, in my opinion, a smokescreen for the real reasons which are political. NIMBYism in Land Park and their relationship with the Sacramento City Council. The Broadway Bridge doesn't do anything to alleviate all of that traffic from Southport which is going to be so much 10 years from now from going, funneling, being funneled north when there's that perfect outlet right there at Sutterville Road. And I haven't heard any reason why that bridge is not a good idea. I keep hearing about the truck traffic. I'm not sure you couldn't construct a bridge with load limits or put prohibitions on tractor trailers going down Lake Washington. I just think it's all a matter of political will and I haven't heard anything to change my mind on that. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And Commissioner Leibig, do you have any comments or questions?
Not for the public. Just for the staff.
Okay. Commissioner Thompson? Okay. Commissioner Tomber? Okay. We have one more request, oh, and I do have some comments, but I'll, I'll bring them up after. One more request to speak by Marcia Fiamingo.
You should give yourself.
I really need to change that name. Thank you. I wanted to follow up on the comments presented by the gentleman.
Could you actually introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry. My name's Marcia Fiamingo. I live in the new development, Riverlanding, and that's very close neighboring to the new Liberty Development. And I, I have two, two points. One is that I wanted to follow up on the comments that the gentleman earlier in the Argel shirt made. I didn't catch his name, I'm sorry. The reason I was late tonight was because you had no information about this meeting, about where it was, online. On the website, it says that you can meet the first and third, first and third Thursday of every month. It lists a time, it lists your live, your live feed. There's no notice on where it is.
Yeah, well, it's, it's noticed on the agenda, actually. The meeting will be held at City Hall, and it gives the address.
Okay. Also, all the doors are locked downstairs.
Oh, they're, they're locked, there's, there's a poll, there's a polling training going on.
If there wasn't a polling training meeting going on, how would we get in?
It's normally open. I, I've not had a problem.
Okay. All the front doors are locked, the security guard did not know what, where it was. Yeah, everything downstairs is locked.
Okay.
So it does make it a little bit difficult. And the other point I wanted to make about that is, I've been involved in organizations where I think we're doing a great job of getting out and telling the public what's going on, and I think we've put a lot of work into it, and it turns out that we haven't. And there is a vast, large number of people that don't know what, what is happening, what's available to them, what, what recourse they have, and how to engage. I can say for a fact that nobody has approached our neighborhood. We are the, you would think that, you know, we're the neighborhoods right adjacent to this new development going in, and nobody has said anything. There's been no notices put up, we haven't received a direct mailing, there hasn't been, been anything. So it does not engender as much good faith in the council and this process when it feels like this discussion is not for public review. And that makes it a little bit more difficult for us. That being said, I'm here, I'm excited, and I'm excited to see the conclusion of this whole, this whole very obviously 10-year process, and I'm looking forward to the new development. I do have some concerns, and we'll bring them up on November 1st, about the, the actual development.
Are you speaking about Liberty?
Yes.
It hasn't come up before us, it's not before us now.
And, and it's not included in the general plan?
Yeah, you haven't been notified because it's not even on the agenda.
Okay. I...
That will come at a much later date.
Okay. I would like to mention that the area maps that they have provided are inaccurate.
Okay.
They show a street that's clearly listed on city planning documents as Mojave connecting to Linden, and on all of Liberty Planning documents, it does not connect to Linden.
Okay. If you can wrap it up, your 30 minutes are...
Okay.
And then also, just wrap it up, and I have a suggestion after.
Thank you.
Okay. And then, can you also speak with the staff after about connecting with the individual that has done some outreach, from my recollection, regarding the Liberty Project?
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Then help, that'll help you to, you know, get involved in the process for public feedback and comments.
Okay. Thank you.
Is that, is that you? Okay. All right now, I don't have any other requests to speak, so I will close the public comment and take it back to the workshop among the commissioners for further discussion. I, I'd like to, you know, move section by, or element by element, as we did the last time, and just to make sure that we cover everything, and, you know, just track the changes that we have provided.
Chair Guerrero, before we move on, I just wanted to address the doors being locked.
Yes.
The city regularly locks the doors in front of the Galleria. The doors in the back that lead to City Hall are open. I think there may have been some confusion on their part trying to enter from the Galleria versus City Hall. Everyone in attendance here was able to successfully come here. I, I came myself not too long ago, the doors are in fact open.
Okay, that's good to know, thank you. I'm glad the doors are not locked. All right. We will start off with the West Sacramento Vision for the Future, that, just wanted to ask the commissioners if there are any comments or feedback in that section. In the introduction, actually, we'll cover the whole introduction. Yeah? Okay. And then next to the, let's see, we'll go next to the land use element, if there are any comments and feedback on the land use element. Commissioner Moore, do you have?
No.
No? Okay. Commissioner Sternfels? Commissioner Austin? No? Commissioner Leibig? Commissioner Tomber? No? Okay. Next, move to the, let's see, it's part... All part two. Okay, that is the urban structure and design element. Any comments and feedback? No? Next is the economic development element. Any comments and feedback? Okay, well, I, I do have some, some feedback. I had provided some changes, and this time I drafted them. I'm looking at Goal ED 1, and the first section of the ED element under maintain and expand strong, diverse, and sustainable local economy that provides abundant employment opportunities, a high quality of life, and a sound tax base. I don't see a really good goal for our building industry to ensure we are protecting our tax dollars when investing in the construction of projects, so I'm considering adding ED 1.13 to state economic benefits for construction projects. And then the city shall establish community workforce and training agreements when using public funds to ensure the timely and economic completion of, economical completion of projects. When we are using public funds in our community, I think it's really important that we complete those projects timely, and it is a benefit to our community, our, our community workforce. And that is a recommendation that I have.
I, I take issue with the first part of it. I don't have an issue with the timeliness, but I take issue with the, the workforce aspect of it. There's, there are aspects of, even though it's very general language, it could set up public, public, publicly financed projects to cost more than we currently have the budget for. So I just want to caution that, that the way that you frame that could, could have implications on, on the labor negotiations between the city and potential contractors.
Okay. Commissioner Moore?
I thought, I thought when we use public funds, it was always supposed to be at, like, tell me the word I want.
State prevailing wages.
Yeah, that kind of stuff. I, I thought it was supposed to be...
Which is, which is a, which is a different term. That's the reason I'm making that distinction, because the, the specific terms you use have very different implications for potential negotiation. And I don't know if, if city council wants to weigh in on what the implications might be.
So what does that mean? Does that mean yes or no? Yes, we do have prevailing...
So state prevailing wa, well, all of them answer, but state prevailing wage is different than, than specifically for contracts.
Oh, okay.
I defer to...
Well, I'm not exactly sure what your question is, but the, but anytime public funds are used for a project, then that does trigger the payment of prevailing wages?
Okay, so it does. So that's already the case.
That is already the case, yes.
So in other words, I, I don't see establishing a community workforce and training agreement when using public funds is a major modification of what our current practice is.
I would disagree respectfully. A community workforce and training agreement is a very specific legal document that would require the city to do, to take, undertake certain actions that we currently have the choice to take, and putting that in our general planning document would make any incredibly more complex and already complex public works process. I'm not saying that it's not a laudable goal or idea, but it's certainly not one that, at the 11:55 hour, to quote Ms. Hamilton, I would be comfortable supporting, putting in a document that's already gone through several revisions, particularly by our previous Economic Development Advisory Committee. In this committee, we have really strong provisions in this general plan and in the economic development element about creating skilled workforce and training workers and providing training opportunities. And there's certainly a commitment from our community to invest locally whenever we see fit, and we have tons of great partnerships that already do that. So I would, I would be very cautious and not supportive of going any further than we currently have.
Okay. Can you repeat your recommendation on that? Adding ED 1.13, economic benefits for construction projects. The city shall establish community workforce and training agreements when using public funds to ensure the timely and economical completion of projects.
Okay, I have to, I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Sternfels on this. I feel like there are a lot of provisions in place, and, you know, certainly, I, I read the general plan, the proposed general plan, as an employment attorney, so I've certainly been looking out for these, these subjects specifically. And I, I think that they're spread through various, various chapters in here and addressed quite well, and I think that this would add an additional burden, and it could be misinterpreted. So I have to agree with Commissioner Sternfels and his objections, but I do, I do understand and commend your intent in your proposal.
Okay, thank you. I think, before moving on, I think it is really important that we do take that into consideration, we, we do have construction projects here in the city, and making sure that our residents are, you know, first in line when we look at investing our public funds, that they are first in line in receiving the job opportunities and the wages and the benefits, so that they do have training opportunities to get jobs and then move forward into a career in the construction trade. So seeing that I don't have the votes to move this forward, I will continue on with the next recommendation that I have. It's Goal ED 4. And looking at Goal ED... Where is it? ED 4.1, adding 4.12 to state, "The city shall support the formation of community workforce and training agreement when using public funds to promote an increase in employment opportunities for workers who reside in West Sacramento to help increase training and employment opportunities for the city's students in the construction trades through the joint apprenticeship program as the students graduate from school."
And can you explain how that would be different than 4.1? I'm only concerned about making it industry-specific, and I feel like 4.1 addresses it more generally.
Joint, joint apprenticeship program is a real specific program, and I think that that is a stronger program that has over 30 trades, that it provides very specialized training, and that, this language here that I have provided is not specific to the workforce investment language that you see here in ED 4.1.
My, well, and I, I'll let other commissioners weigh in, but my, my personal opinion is that I, I don't think that we should limit it to one particular industry, because it would essentially, by mentioning one type of industry or program, it would assume an exclusion of other industries, so I prefer to keep it general. And I also think that 4.1 does make a, it's, I think it's a general reference to workforce investment boards, which is a similar thing, but I would be willing to hear from other folks if they have other...
It's not the same as workforce investment boards. It is very specific to, like, a joint apprenticeship program for our students to be able to, you know, participate in something that helps them to, you know, get into an apprenticeship program, then journeyman, and then have a career.
Madam Chair, if I heard you correctly in your citing of your proposal, did it also include the same term, "community workforce agreement"?
It did, it includes...
So I'm going to oppose for this, this proposal for the same reasons as previous.
Okay.
I'm, I'm in, I'm in agreement with, with Commissioner Sternfels. Thank you.
I'm also gonna object, partially because I agree with Commissioner Sternfels, but also Commissioner Austin raises great points. This is a, a policy document, and, and it's quite detailed, and it's, it certainly has a lot of, of goals, but I, I think that something specific to one particular industry could trap the city into, it, it could restrict them from, from creating ordinances that would, you know, or just generally, generally creating plans that could help other industries. I just feel like it's a limiting, it would be, the proposal would be limiting, and, and I, and I feel like your intent is, is contained within 4.1.
Okay, thank you. All right. Given that I do not have the votes, I will continue on with the next element, the mobility element. Is there any comment or feedback on the mobility element?
Oh, I'm glad, now I'm, now I'm into my section.
Okay, here you go.
This is the dog disappears.
You know, I, this is just a comment that I, I still am not quite sure what we've done with it, and this is the M 7.9. Just check this baby out. Vehicle charging stations. Remember, we were talking about charging stations and fueling stations over in the Bridge District, and you talked about, "We're not gonna have fueling stations, but these pay for charging stations are the same thing as a fueling station." And we were going to have to either revisit it or eliminate those as charging stations because they're similar to a gasoline service station, in everybody's opinion up here except Mr. Tilly's maybe, you know?
I do recall that discussion, and I think that it's the word "station" perhaps is where we get hung up, as we're all used to.
And you're, you're probably right, but I was, I noticed it in here, and I noticed that we talked about it, and we had come to the determination, I kind of felt that a charging station where you had to pay for it, not one that's provided by a location, but one that you had to pay for, was just like going to buy gasoline at a service station. So I, I just am offering that as a suggestion, that you need to look at that before it moves forward.
Thinking maybe we change stations to infrastructure.
That might be a good word, David. I don't know. I just, that was my point, and I thought we should bring it back up again.
Mr. Tilly, I may be wrong in my memory, but I want to recall that we had talked about, once the general plan being completed, going back and looking at some of the terms and definitions for electric vehicle and a charging station infrastructure and the zoning ordinance, and updating that after we got this done. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, that is, that is still on our to-do list.
So I, just for the heck of it, what do we do now with that? You're gonna look at it and maybe make a judgment before it goes forward to the council?
Yeah, I think we want to clarify, we're talking about the actual, like, machines that you see, like, out here.
If we have a machine, it's considered a service station, and they're not allowed over there until we change our mind. Okay.
And any other comments to my right? No? All right, to my left, Commissioner Leibig, Commissioner Tomber? Okay. I have one suggestion under community development, table, the table 3.5, page 2-17. Under number five, I was thinking of adding law enforcement when we're taking a look at traffic collision data. Would law enforcement also have that kind of data?
I would assume so, yes.
Would they, so I think it would just make some sense to add them in there as well.
Well, this would be information coming from city staff going to the council.
Okay, so then they...
And presumably, a lot of that would come from the police as they do their investigations and of, of collisions. And they are, they're listed as the responsible, the primary responsible department for this function.
Okay. And that's all I have at this time. No other comments? Next is the public facilities and services element. Any comments or feedback from anywhere? No? Okay. I, I will add that the 21st Century Policing Report presentation was very good last night, demonstrated a lot of good data that we're getting from our police department to continue to track. to continue to track and move forward and how we refine our policing strategies. So I think it's a great addition to the, to the general plan. And in page two dash roman numeral seven, under number twenty-three, just a typo with the city, Shell Asses Washington, just correcting that typo there. Moving forward to the parks and recreation element. Okay, is that, is that something Commissioner Moore would like to?
I got another one.
Okay, there you go.
Mr. Tilly.
Oh, boy.
Nowhere in here do I see, God forbid me for saying this, equestrian trails. You know, we, we have a commissioner that was here before, Mr. Morzini, that, and I would laugh about it, but we have a policy that we have adopted through our Parks Plan that we have walking, biking, running, and equestrian trails. And I don't see in the parks, I see all the walking and riding and everything, but I don't see anything about equestrian.
Did you look under mobility? Because I remember having the discussion about that.
I know, but I don't, that's why I was going to David. I thought it would be here under the. I was in, in the section here talking about trails. And I just didn't see equestrian. And I know we, we need to have that out there. That's something we promised.
Yeah, we've, we've kept this at the highest level possible, addressing recreational corridors under the goal PR two. And so we certainly don't prohibit any equestrian, but we will leave the specifics of where equestrians can and should be accommodated really to the Parks Master Plan and also the Bike Ped Trails Master Plan that really actually designs out all of those facilities, you know, for real world use.
I understand that you could have an issue there, but I think somewhere in this particular section, we should, we should at least say that. It's okay to have it there, say, you know, maybe we're not sure that it can go on every trail, but it's part of our trail plan. And I just think, personally, I brought it up last time, I'm bringing it up again. I think we need to have something said about equestrian trails because we hired a guy to do our trails and went and had the meeting downstairs and he didn't even know equestrian was part of it. So I don't want it to be forgotten.
And we can work in equestrian if that's the pleasure of the commission.
I agree.
I, I support Commissioner Morse.
I have enough folks.
Do you have any suggestions? Do you have any, yes, you have enough votes.
I have enough votes to, could we put equestrian somewhere in there, David? Thank you very much.
Do you have any suggestions where to put it, by the way? Just kind of like target.
You're asking me?
You know, I thought it was under, it sort of was under mobility. I don't see it. And mobility references bike pedestrian, but it could be bike pedestrian trails or, unless you really prefer it under parks.
Probably under goal PR two is probably where we can work it in most.
You know, I just.
Downhill off the ped bike stuff.
No, I don't care if it's in mobility or it's in parks. It just seemed to me that parks was the natural place for it because it talks about the trails and stuff. And it's fine, as long as David knows what I'm doing. And I, I just think it's important that, yes, I know there's issues sometimes about a certain trail, but at one point in time, this thing was designed in West Sacramento, going back maybe even before David. But it actually was supposed to go somewhere and connect to Sacramento.
I think two point three might be what you're referencing. And I, I really, I really do think that we recommended, that I recall having this conversation. So I think two point three might be a good place to include that.
Anyway, just so.
Pedestrian bicycle.
Yeah, whatever they feel is necessary so that it's in there. I just think it needs to be said. And that's all. Thank you.
So we would suggest that we add a new one, PR two dash seven, specific to equestrian. We'd like to keep it kind of away from the bicycle pedestrian because we do need to recognize the, you know, appropriate open space areas and what it's connecting to may be different than bicycle pedestrian. So we'll add a new one.
Thank you.
I, I, you know, I appreciate that, except right along my running trail are horses. I mean, and I, and I like seeing the horses. It's, well, I won't mention that here in public, but no, they're there. And, you know, I think, I, I think we share the road kind of thing. And this is part of our, you know, it's really nice. It's, you, you do feel like you're not in, in, you know, a big city. And so I'm, I'm, I appreciate where you're putting it. And I just want to say realistically, we're not there in my neighborhood. Are you done now? Are we all finished on this side? Okay. Fishing, I wanted to add fishing somewhere and I didn't find it, David. I recall you said you were gonna put it in. Did you put it in somewhere? I, I don't see it. As a recreational use.
We may need to work, work that in. That may be one we overlooked from last time and I apologize for that.
Okay.
But there, similarly with the equestrian, there's a, there's definitely a place to, perhaps under, under the Barge Canal Recreation, we can actually add fishing, a reference to that. There's a policy under three point seven and also for, in the three point one about river access.
Okay. Sorry. So we're done with the parks and recreation element? All right, sorry, I, I missed something. I need to go back. It's probably not gonna be the discussion we all want to have, but I'm just gonna bring it up because it came up in, and I did say to, to the speaker that I would bring it up. It is regarding the bridges and I, I, in the mobility element, I think that's where it's at. Trying to keep track of comments and things I want to add. It is under mobility element, M dash three point one four, adequate Southport area access. And I noticed that Enterprise Bridge was included. I, I appreciate that we do have the Enterprise Bridge. I re, I recall saying that in my comments then, but I, I don't think it really addresses, maybe for certain modes of transportation and, and for industrial use it does. I, I think that that's extremely important and necessary. But I do, you know, think that down, this is a thirty year document. And looking at keeping our options open as, as we move forward and things are changing. You know, we're gonna get different types of vehicles moving forward. And just trying to keep our options open in finding access to the bridge, the I five bridge in the Southport area. Because I, I do agree with the comments that, you know, and I hear it from our residents, trying to move, you know, just driving out of the Southport area and we're not at full capacity yet, we're not built out yet. It's just gonna be an extreme backup in traffic trying to get out of the city. So I understand you don't want to include it and the city and the city council have already made up their mind on not including it. But I do think it's extremely important that we consider that in the future and keep our options open. So if anybody has any, any other additional feedback or thoughts?
You know, I would not, oh, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to. No, I wouldn't mind seeing this have something in the document that said that we always are looking at options in Southport for another bridge. I mean, obviously, we all thought that Linden was the absolute ideal spot until we realized the riffraff coming from Land Park into Southport.
Exactly.
You know, and that concerned me. But, you know, and that was kind of how the discussion went years ago. And so keeping the option open, if there's an opportunity to have another bridge out of Southport is a great idea. I don't think that hurts anything. I just don't know where it would be. And I don't know that, you know, Linden's the, the answer. It may not ever be the answer.
So my, my comment on that, I just kind of wanted to address this is that if, some of the recommendations we're making have really no significant environmental impact, but we've done the EIR and making changes to policies, programs in economic, in economic development or possibly health may not have really significant impacts. If we added something like that, like a explorer, keeping our options open exploring, may have significant environmental impacts would change the EIR that's already been done on the document. That being said, this document, it's a long-term document, but as, Mr., I forgot who it was, but the city staff who was commenting on the bridges, we would not be constructing a bridge, a new bridge in Southport until after this would be going through yet another revision. So I think that there's an opportunity for us to continue to have policy discussions and move towards that. But to include it in the general plan, I think, is not, not the direction we want to go in at this moment. But I think it's worth noting, and, and maybe it's a comment that we asked city staff to include in the staff report that goes before the city council, saying that we did mention that we would like, we as a planning commission would recommend that, that we continue to explore that but not, not be captured in this general plan document.
Chair, one other thing I'd throw out is one, one comment I know came up in the council's deliberations was the discussion of the future role of autonomous vehicles and the great potential that it has in eliminating a lot of congestion problems that we currently face because the human element will be removed from the, the efficiency of transportation, or the inefficiency, I should say. So, you know, I, I totally appreciate the conversation, but in the same token, I think there's, you know, part of looking towards the future is that sometimes the conditions change too, not just the needs. And, and in the case of autonomous vehicles, in the next thirty years, we may be in a completely different place and congestion may no longer be the issue that it is today. Or maybe it will be. It's, it's, I think it's probably one of those things that's to be determined in some ways, but I certainly think there's some potential there. And I appreciate the foresight of the council to, to think about that piece of the puzzle too because that's a, building, building a new piece of infrastructure isn't always the right answer to solving a problem. Sometimes it's changing in how, how we live, how we do business. And, you know, we're talking about additional bike and pet options and trails. The goal is to move away automobile transportation, single automobile transportation. I mean, that's, that's the broader policy goal, both of the state and the, in this region and certainly this town. And so if that's the case, I think, you know, we, a bridge is one alternative of several, probably in the swath of thinking about our future transportation needs and how we get there.
I wanted to second Charlie's comment. I understand that this is a kind of a steering document for us. At the same time, I think a more general statement could also be useful. That said, back when we were reviewing land use policies, or not, the land use maps and things, we, we actually looked at different bridge sites. And the Enterprise was ranked as one of the best ones we could add next for various reasons, but it, it takes truck traffic off of Jefferson, off of Harbor, off of the Palma Desi Bridge and, and moves it over to Enterprise, thus freeing up space for additional residential traffic. So I still believe that that bridge is very much worth pursuing. As far as this policy block document goes, I could go along with something such as, let's see. Let's see, we're talking about the access to Southport and including development of new bridges. And you could put something such as the Enterprise Bridge if council still wanted to be.
It doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be the bridge at Linden Road. It could be Enterprise that would take away a ton of traffic too. But keeping options available is, is the comment.
The point was to, to make.
Unless we kill the whole document.
Such as development of, or identify, identify new bridge locations or development of new bridges. In other words, make it broader, more broad.
Yeah, I mean, I put the reference to Enterprise Bridge in here because the EIR assumes that it is in place by twenty thirty-five. And that is something that we have talked about both here and at the Transportation Commission as well as the city council. And so that's, that's a major shift. I can say that the Sutterville Bridge was actually taken out of the general plan way back in two thousand. And, you know, with the way that we then be looked at again with the river crossing study. And then there's also just the reality of, you know, how many two hundred million dollar bridges, you know, would this region be able to accommodate? The best part about the Enterprise Bridge is, well, it's only in our city, so we don't have to worry what Land Park or Sacramento or, or any of those, those types of concerns. So we're already, you know, getting excited about, you know, planning for an Enterprise Bridge that, you know, still may be twenty or thirty years away, but it'll be fifty years away if we don't start, you know, looking at it, you know, really soon. And through our analysis and we, we previously presented to the commission, that offers us some significant benefits and avoids a lot of other upstream improvements that would probably would be at the detriment of pedestrians, bikes, and then also, you know, developable property. So that's, that was why I put the Enterprise in here. I don't mind saying such as the Enterprise Bridge, but, you know, that's a specific piece of our, our puzzle in our environmental document. And a significant piece, I would say.
Okay, so the reference that Commissioner LeBig mentioned was, I think, including other bridges such as the Enterprise Bridge. Is that the?
Let's see, including development of new bridges.
Development.
Such as the Enterprise Bridge.
I'd like to reiterate my comment that before, that, that maybe the staff take it under advisement and if there are significant environmental concerns that it's brought up, at least at our next, at, at the next planning commission hearing on the first. Because I, I do think that, I do think that substant, that substantively changes what was approved in this, that there was first, that there was a specific location with specific impacts. I could be wrong, but I'm just saying I'd.
I'd like to actually opine on that now. I, I am concerned that if we start proposing the potential for other bridges in here that we are triggering the need to now analyze what those potential environmental impacts would be. So a change that I would be comfortable with from a CEQA perspective that wouldn't trigger further analysis and recirculation of the document could be, occurs in the Southport area such as the Enterprise Bridge. But I would recommend against including language that suggests we're gonna be looking at additional bridges too.
Okay, that, that completely modifies my, the recommendation.
I vote for Mona.
For Mona. All right, we will add instead of including such as. All right, is that everybody okay with that recommendation?
If you get comfortable with those two words, that's fine.
So we move on to the natural and cultural resources element. Some modifications in there. If anybody has any feedback? We have faucets instead of sinks. No changes, no comments, okay? Now the safety element is the next part we're reviewing. And I don't see any major modification, no modifications there. And the next one is, oh, there's flood control projects and that's, our levies and our flood control projects are significantly important to our city. And I appreciate that they are included in here.
And I should note that the commission last year did approve, recommend approval of most of these flood policies that we had to put into, already into the general plan for SB five. So we're carrying them forward, but almost everything that's flood related in here actually is already in our current general plan.
So next is the healthy community element. And we have noticed that there were some changes that our commissioners had recommended. And just want to make sure that those changes are all good? We're all good with those changes? And we have concluded reviewing the general plan policy document. Any final comments or suggestions or? Yes, Commissioner, Commissioner Moore.
Chair, I'd like to make a few comments. Mostly because it's probably somewhat unlikely that I will be at the next meeting in which we have a motion to adopt this, this general plan. So I wanted to say a few things. The first is I, I'm glad that we had some members of the public out tonight. I appreciated the feedback and comments that were made. I want, you know, I've spent four years volunteering for the city on various commissions and all four years of my time have been, at some point or another, devoted towards the development of this general plan document that's before us tonight. Countless meetings, public, with city staff in public meetings to move forward on this plan. And I am candidly very proud of the document itself and super grateful for city staff, including Mr. Tilly, Ms. Hamilton, my colleagues here on the commission, and everyone else on all the other commissions who have worked really hard to create a document that we can all be proud of and that will really guide the city, I think, in the next wave of our development. And so while I may not be here, I am a, both enthusiastic and wholehearted, wholehearted supporter of this document. And I want to specifically thank Mr. Tilly for making tonight's meeting. meeting in my mind super easy because you laid out in our agenda item, uh, in the publicly posted document, uh, that literally spelled out every suggestion minus maybe fishing that we had made, but we gave you a lot of suggestions at our last workshop, uh, and you articulated all of them in the agenda item and, you know, explained what you did and why. And for me, that brought a lot of comfort and ease in coming to night, tonight's meeting, knowing that what was before us was ready to go. And so I just wanted to take a moment and say thank you. I sincerely appreciate all the effort. I know it's been a labor of love and pain for, for you and many others in the city and I'm, I'm really excited, uh, to see this document move forward very soon.
Thank you, Commissioner Sternfeld, Commissioner Moore. Commissioner Austin? Okay, Commissioner Lebig.
Thank you, uh, I'd like to second Commissioner Sternfeld's comments. I very much appreciate the packet and, uh, including comments from council, I also found those very helpful. Um, as, as we're going back and forth, it's nice to know what they're thinking about what we're sending them at the same time. Uh, but we're not sending anything, of course, it was, uh, your office and, uh, I, I greatly appreciate all the work that, uh, the development department has, has put into this doc- document. I did have a couple of general questions and one on the, on the proposed land use changes. Um, one of the changes, uh, on the north side of West Capital, uh, was changing something from commercial to highway service, I'm sorry, from highway services, commercial to commercial to allow it for a little bit more flexibility. Um, could you expand on that because I actually thought highway services, commercial allowed more?
It's actually pretty limited to basically gas stations, fast food, car wash. Um, it doesn't allow for really any office use or more general retail, um, but it does still allow for the gas station and car wash, you know, kind of auto, auto-related stuff. So this gives us a little more options there. Those are three parcels, they're kind of funky shaped, um, and so we wanted to give a little more flexibility there. It's a, it's a minor change, if it's not supported by the commissioner or council, it's not the end of the world, um, but we thought at this late hour, that might be, um, helpful to help some of those parcels at that gateway, you know, fill in.
Hey, currently on that parcel is, if I'm looking at this correct, this is a hotel and a restaurant?
Yeah, well, the restaurant's the old Epi's that's been gone for some time now. Uh, we would probably expect that building to get demoed, uh, you know, in the, in the near future and something new built there. And then the city owns the property at the tail end of that, so, um, this could be a pro- you know, a pretty good development site overall, if you could, if someday of all three could get combined, um, there in the future.
Are hotels included in the current zone, the, the highway services?
Yes. And it would be in the commercial zone as well.
Not that I'm suggesting we have another hotel, uh, because there was another one going in on the other side, complete opposite, on the other side of the freeway from right there. Um, okay, thank you for, for your explanation on that one. Um, and then, oh, I apologize. Oh, getting to the, to the bridges, um, interestingly that it was noted that the I Street Bridge was a Sacramento project and that the Broadway Bridge was a West Sacramento project. I, I actually see them as joint projects, although I understand that the different cities are sharing management roles.
Yeah, I mean, just somebody has to be, you know, officially in the lead on that. So Sacramento, you know, so Sacramento, you know, was the, is the lead on I Street and we're the, the lead on Broadway from, you know, project management standpoint and who hires the consultants and things, but it's still very much a joint effort.
Right. And that was my question is how is West Sac staying involved in this project to assure that we're complying with our general plan and our policies?
Uh, well, Mr. McCoy was here and he and I talk frequently, um, about that and, uh, both myself and Ms. Hamilton are part of that I Street, you know, bridge core team and there are, I know there are frequent meetings with Sacramento, you know, on the project as well.
And there was an excellent presentation provided to city council on the I Street Bridge, you know, project and the development of it, what the current stage is at.
And, and they're going in, into design, correct?
Yeah, there, I have the, uh, administrative draft EIR on my desk right now.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that will be out here in the next couple of months to be a big step and I like to think that bridge could be oper- could be maybe start construction in probably eighteen and maybe finish by twenty approximately.
It's getting farther.
Approximately, well, it's almost seventeen.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, it's challenging to, you know, do work in waters, I'm sure you're well aware of Commissioner Lebig.
Right.
And so, um, there's, there's a lot to make that bridge happen.
This project in particular, I think, will benefit from having this policy document completed, uh, and our goal is clearly stated, but then, um, yes, and, and guidance from the city, uh, again, getting back to how this, how this very large project connecting the two cities is going to look is, uh, and, and how it actually operates, uh, to facilitate movement between the two cities is very, very important, so, thank you. Um, then the other part, again, echoing Mr. Sternfeld's, I, I too have been to several public workshops.
Yes.
Not up here, uh, you know, down, downstairs, sitting, sitting in the rooms with the big flip charts and across the street at the community center talking about bicycles, bicycle, bicycle paths. Somewhere we were talking about parks and where they go, I don't even remember where that meeting was, but there have been countless meetings, uh, building up to the, these final moments. Um, and it does strike me a little weird that people are showing up now. Um, not that those, those workshops weren't well attended, um, but it, it seems a little odd that we're getting, uh, community members showing up that are uninformed at this point of where we are in the process and I'm not sure what outreach is going on. It's great that this, the city commit, uh, continues to, uh, conduct outreach. It just seems a little odd that, uh, we're, we're getting this response at this point.
Well, certainly folks could have moved the town the last couple of years, I mean, it's a lot of, a lot of factors going into it, but, you know, we try to put as much information out there as we can with the tools we have and the, and the budget we have before us and that's why, you know, we've, I was doing math in my head, I think I've been to, I know I've been to every single commission that we have, plus ones we used to have and council and community meetings. We're somewhere at least in the thirty to forty meeting range on this, you know, over this time period.
Yeah.
And it has been a good process. We've gotten a lot of good input from a lot of people from different points of view throughout this and we've attempted to cull all that together into what you have before you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, and yes, just, um, just reflecting on, on what, uh, city council member Bill Kristoff said, this is our bible for the next thirty years and, um, I really appreciate all the hard work, um, both you, David and Charlene have done to get this document. You guys have been working extremely hard and you and the whole staff and working with all the commission meetings, um, you know, hearing, um, Commissioner Sternfeld's mentioned that he recalled when it was in Economic Development Advisory Commission and seeing those elements now in here and have you here on the planning commission just, um, continuing to, you know, provide that input. Um, so just a, a longstanding, um, planning process and, uh, your, your dedication and commitment, you know, and making sure that our city continues to thrive and improve and do well. Um, all the residents have reflected that, you know, we've done extremely well over the years and are happy with the progress we have made. Not, not everybody's happy, you know, it's, it's not perfect, but we've had a recession, we've had some struggles along the way, but I think we're continuing to move forward, um, in doing well, uh, and just, uh, we're, you know, it, it's an exciting process for me to be in and, you know, to be the chair. It's just, it's quite an honor, um, and to be working with all of you over this last, you know, ten months, um, in planning for this big day. And, uh, the next steps will be, um, uh, to, uh, have the public hearing, um, for the twenty thirty-five draft policy document, the land use map and the corresponding zoning updates and the EIR, which will all take place on November first. I understand you'll be providing us with the documents in advance for, you know, to be able to review it and then?
Yeah, since we're going to have our meeting on a Tuesday, you know, we're going to try to get the packet out to you a little bit earlier than normal since we're move, we moved up the meeting by two days, but, um, yes, the, it'll be a substantive packet next time. Um, but it's all information that you've largely have reviewed previously.
Okay. And will there be any, anybody who's unable to make it to the meeting that we have to?
Um, I was hoping after, once we got to informal discussion, unless that's where we are now, that I, I did want to poll, um, everyone again to make sure.
I think we're there now, yeah.
Yeah, and-
We've been polled.
Yeah.
And I, I believe, I believe, uh, Commissioner Kelter told us previously that he would be able to be there on the first. Also, we knew he would not be able to be here tonight.
Can I make one more contribution to informal discussion? Um, so I, because we, because we are talking about it and I'll be talking about it tomorrow, I, I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, Charlene Hamilton's work and some of the work that we've been doing with, um, our partners, um, for, on my part, it's been volunteer work, um, but work that we've been doing, um, across the river with property owners and with developers looking at our riverfront. Um, it's really exciting, there's a, there's actually a lot of new, um, there's a lot of new staff, there's a lot of new elected officials coming on board and, um, I, I really see there being, um, an excitement around collaborating along our riverfront. So it's, it's very exciting. Thank you, Charlene, thank you, you know, Katie Gillespie, who I'm sure is not watching at home. Uh, that's the, that's basically the David Tilly for, for Sacramento, um, and again, the, the elected officials, property owners and developers who've been really engaged in that process. Um, like this planning commission, we have some really great people who are coming together to, to make our, our shared riverfront great and I look forward to continue working on that, so, thank you.
Thank you. To me, not with informal discussion, um, there was, uh, a reference that, um, the mayor had mentioned, um, to work on some, um, project development along, along West Capital Avenue. Um, given the concerns that were raised by the community, we have, um, had an approval for a six hundred thousand dollar grant. And, um, did you have any details on that, just the timing or anything?
I know I don't specifically myself.
I actually left a memo that I had on that back on my desk. But yes, you are correct, um, he did mention that last night, so we can go back and look, you can go back and look at the, the videotape.
Okay.
And, or we can, um, get that information forwarded to the commission. The timing on it though is, um, gosh, I'm trying to remember, we just got this, there's two grants, uh, one has to do with some improvements, um, to help, uh, bicycle pedestrian safety and some, some movements that way. And then there is another grant that went to police to try to, uh, work on, um, mental health services, uh, things of that nature.
Okay.
Uh, because some of the, um, some of the things that have been occurring along West Capital, um, I, I can be attributed to some of those types of issues.
Okay, all right, that's good to know.
So we can, we can definitely report back on, uh, November first if nothing else.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, also the, uh, wanted to thank the, the staff for the great, um, Village Parkway opening. It was, uh, wonderful to, you know, and now I'm driving through it, coming back home, it's so much easier and smoother to come back home through that, um, Village Parkway. And, uh, so just, um, cuts across traffic and gets me home quickly. Um, and the other thing I wanted to mention was Bill Kristoff's retirement event, um, and his thirty years of dedicated service to, um, West Sacramento. Charlie did a great job with his, um, with his roast.
Roast?
No, it's fine. It was really nice, it was nicely done, um, and well, you know, he's, he's been a, a, just a, a great contributor, um, to our community and I'd just like to recognize all the good work he's done, um, and thank him for his work. And thank you, Charlie, too.
Well, thank you.
And with that, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, you're adjourned.